Okay, you're all ready to go.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of the planning board to order. I'm here myself, Brad Matrulie and.
George Mitchell.
Joe Torri.
Okay, and Chris Lawrence and then we have a guest, David Slouscher. I don't want to ruin your name.
That's okay, he's been ruined a lot.
Alright, so pursuant to section two dash twenty-nine dash two seven four, the applicant is seeking site plan approval and a curb cut, ooh curb cut, variance for a project at the aforementioned address. The thirteen point six acre project site until recently purchased by Burststone Road Associates LLC was owned by eleven, one eleven and one seventeen Business Park Corp. There is one building on the subject parcel, a two-story eighty thousand square foot structure constructed in nineteen eighty-eight. The ownership and or building occupancy has included General Electric, Martin Marietta and United Healthcare. Currently, the site includes a single curb cut onto Burst Business Park Drive with parking for three hundred plus in the west of the building. The main building entry faces north toward Business Park Drive and its receiving docks are located to the south. The site includes a substantial stormwater detention basin to the southwest of the building. The project includes interior and external renovation for utilization by the Slocum Dixon Medical Group as an outpatient medical facility. A new curb cut in parking area has been proposed at the east side of the facility, increasing the parking capacity to four hundred and fourteen vehicles. Additionally, a covered drop-off added at the building's new west public entry. A short environmental assessment form and stormwater pollution prevention plan has been provided. Okay? Shall we proceed? Chris?
Yeah, so Dave, so Dave, if you just want to walk them through.
Sure.
The improvements here?
Sure, can everybody see my screen?
Yes, David.
Okay. What we're showing on the the first slide, if you will, are the photographs of the existing building as it currently stands. The existing building is a mixture of brick, metal siding and single pane glass. The, the, can you see my arrow?
Yes.
Okay, good. To, to the south basically is the receiving area and the site actually drops somewhere in the neighborhood of ten feet from the Burststone Road, or excuse me, from the.
Business Park Drive?
Business Park Drive down to the rear of the site. The second slide is actually a survey of the existing site. You can see there's a curb cut right here. Not to confuse, the, the previous parcel was around sixteen acres. It was owned by the Willenovan one seventeen Burst, Business Park Drive and SDNG, the, the medical group, has purchased thirteen acres of it, essentially right along this property line right here. That has actually been subdivided and filed. So this area right in here is actually the thirteen acres or owned by the medical group. This curb cut right in here is exclusive to the medical group. It was shared previously, but it's now exclusive to the medical group. The shaded area you can see here is the parking. It exists, it's approximately three hundred parking spaces available right now. This area down in here is the retention basin. The basin actually serves not only this parcel, but several other parcels in the business park. The, this is the eighty thousand square foot building. There's a front component right in here, which is two stories, approximately seventeen thousand square foot per floor. And then the rear portion, which is a story and a half, comprises the remainder of the square footage. This is just basically a quick graphic showing again the, the demo that's being proposed. I'll get back to that in a minute. This is actually what is being proposed. This area over to the left is the, the remainder of the parcel that wasn't purchased. It is on a temporary basis available to the, to, to the medical group to park in, but it's on the, it's, it's on the auction block and once it's sold, it will be, it'll be totally subdivided.
Is it a parking lot today? I, I don't know offhand.
It is.
Okay.
It is a part, what's showing here?
Yes.
Proposed work, it just exists.
Okay.
And. So this curb cut right in here will remain. This light shaded area is the existing parking where we're configuring the parking, creating a, called a turnaround, the main entry off to the side. We, we'll, I'll show you eventually a rendering of this. This is the covered drop-off, it's the main entry to the facility, to the medical facility. And then there'll be a secondary entrance on the east side created over here. So you'll actually. Users will basically enter from both the west side and the east side depending upon which area of, medical area they're going to. This darkly, dark shaded area over in here is the existing, is the additional asphalt that's being created and the additional parking space is approximately one hundred and eleven additional parking spaces, bringing the count from three hundred plus up to four hundred and fourteen. We are proposing a second curb cut in here simply because once this is locked off here, three hundred to four hundred parking spaces trying to exit through one curb cut is a lot. And this of course gets a more direct entrance for those that are being serviced by the medical practices that are on this side versus those that are on the west side. The medical practices that are going in here, just as a little background. The, what's, this is. Obviously, the Slocum Dixon is, is located on Burststone Road. That facility will remain in New Hartford. This is a satellite operation and this will bring new pediatrics. There'll be an urgent care down in this area right in here, small one. Dermatology, there'll be an imaging operation up in here and then there'll be OB-GYN and breast care down in this area. All totaled about, of the eighty thousand square feet right now in the first phase, about sixty thousand square feet will be turned into medical offices and the remainder will be for future expansion. The. Again, the medical practices should bring somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty between the doctors, additional doctors and support staff, somewhere in the neighborhood of about eighty additional jobs. The. These are just blowups of the, of the areas that we're talking about, pass through those. We have submitted through our civil engineer. This is a topographic site plan. We've also given you a grading plan here for the expansion area that's up in to the east side. A lighting plan and a landscape plan. This is site, this is site lighting plan. In photometrics. I can back up to any of these if you want to get through them. There was a question when the original. Original plan was submitted to the, to, to you, to the planning board. The curb cut that was showing was in the neighborhood of sixty feet. It has been amended, so it actually is forty, forty-five feet from radius to radius and about twenty-four feet across. So it, it is in compliance with the current regulations for the business park. These are just site details, the exterior elevations, the exterior is being totally revamped. There'll be no expansion per se other than the, the canopy over the drop-off area to the east, to the west. But the brick will remain. All windows will be removed and replaced simply because they are single pane and they'll be replaced with more energy efficient windows. The existing metal siding will be covered with insulated metal panels of two shades, one is a coppery color and the other kind of is a light, a light brown. The, once you get to the rear, the existing metal siding will be covered with a new metal siding to blend with the light color of the insulated panel. So everything on the outside of the building will be refaced. We will be putting a, a new roof over, over about probably fifty percent of the facility. We are still questioning the rear portion as it was recently replaced in the last ten years, but most likely the entire roof will be replaced when you're putting enough money under it to. That's a fast overview, I guess I'll address any questions.
Pretty comprehensive to me, I'm, I'm fine.
David, yeah, it was a good overview, David. I, I do have two questions, I think mainly for Chris. Chris, the, other than the curb cut, are there any other guidelines that, within the business park that we should be aware of or that, you know, that might be an exception here in these plans?
No, there are not. The business park doesn't really have any real regulations. The only regulation is that when something like this is proposed, that it is reviewed by the planning board.
Okay.
And also by the URA. I'm trying to find out when the next urban renewal meeting is. They were supposed to have one this week, I believe, and it was postponed. But I did bring this up to Brian and he is, he is in possession of these plans and they are looking to have a special meeting to review this.
Awesome.
So. It requires the approval of both the planning board and the urban renewal agency.
And my, and my other question is, has our engineering department reviewed all the planned details that, that, that we just looked at here?
They have.
They have, you said that?
And I know, and I know that Dave has been in, in contact with them.
Okay.
On and off for a couple of items. But I will read to you the, the letter, the memo that I was issued on December ninth.
Okay. Alright.
The following are comments from site plan review number one. The proposed driveway entrance exceeds forty feet maximum for commercial property and the owner will be required to obtain a variance for the proposed sixty-five foot width, which he is applying to us for. The curb cut permit will be required for the proposed new driveway entrance. A notice of intent, item thirty-eight, long-term operation and maintenance plan has not, not been developed for the site. Who will be responsible? Now, I will say to that question, they have issued. They, they sent the engineering department the answer to that item number thirty-eight. So they do have that.
So that, that has yet to be approved by engineering or at least commented on?
I have not received further comments from engineering. But they've also asked, who will be responsible for the operation and maintenance of the hydrodynamic units proposed for the site? And the notice of intent has not been signed by the owner and operator. I have received the notice of intent that has been signed. But Dave, could you speak a little bit more about who will be responsible for operation and maintenance of the hydrodynamic units?
Actually.
And maybe give the board a little bit of, a brief synopsis of the, the conclusion of the SWIP.
Sure, the, well, first of all, the, as far as the city engineer, we have been back and forth with them and I think of the items that Chris read, this particular curb cut was reduced to after that meeting and we actually sent a modified drawing to the planning board. So this should no longer require variance. That was also sent to the city engineer. He subsequently, we sent him some additional information on the two or three items that he requested and the subsequent comments had, had nothing on it related to the curb cut and it only got an issue with a minor issue with the SWIP notice of intent that we've submitted. And that was line thirty-eight, which I sent to this afternoon, which should be fully corrected. And that had to do with whether a maintenance, a maintenance plan had been developed for the retention basin and the answer now is yes. Previously on the NOI, it said no, now it is yes and a copy was sent this afternoon to the engineer. So basically, obviously, he has not had a chance to review it if he wanted to review it. It also noted on there that maintenance of the stormwater management system was the responsibility of the Slocum Medical, Medical Group and named Rick Wilson, who's the CEO. So that has been filled out as well. The basin itself. Go ahead.
Oh, no, you, you can continue. I was just going to say that I am in receipt of the documents that you had just talked about and they have been given to the engineering department, so we are okay on those, those items.
Okay, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I think we have now complied with everything that he had on his list. I'll, I'll leave the final decision obviously to him.
It, it appears that way, but we'll, we'll still await his, his review.
Okay. As far as. But if. As far as the retention basin.
No, I was just going to say, if you wanted to go ahead and talk about the catch basin, retention basin?
This retention basin is, is rather large. Our civil engineer, Alzen Grilli, designed it originally for, back in eighty-eight. And it was well oversized, was noted in that report. We had him to do, and we had him do a new SWIP based upon the additional parking. And he, in the SWIP that was submitted again to the city and to DEC, it showed that no modifications to the stormwater basin, the retention system were required due to size and the limited additional hard surface that was being added. There is new. The, there, there is new piping being put in. And I think, Chris, that's what you were asking about. And that system, the hydro system, is basically taking the water from the hard surface, the asphalt areas and piping it to the retention basin. So the retention basin doesn't change. We are adding new piping and that particular system. The, will be maintained by the manufacturer of the system and we, on NOI, the civil engineer has named them. So responsibility, which I think was key for the, key to the questions for the civil engineer, maintenance of the retention basin is the owner of the site, is named as the owner of the site and of the hydro system is the manufacturer, has a, a maintenance package and ONM manuals that have, that are, that will be submitted. So that was a key thing, I believe, for the civil engineer to make sure was not the city's responsibility for making any of this. And we've so.
Alright, um, one other thing related to the, the short EAF that you submitted.
Yes.
You, you did mention that this will cause an increase in the amount of traffic. You know, what, what, what type of increase are you looking at then?
Well, I, I guess I shouldn't, I mean, basically when GE and United Healthcare were there, I'm not sure, I'm supposed to be comparing that to an empty building versus when the, that building was fully occupied. When it's fully occupied, if we compare what's projected here, we're probably not increasing the, the load on this site, the traffic substantially versus an empty building.
Hi, Chris, Kate, I have a question. I'm just, well, on the traffic, pardon me if you've already mentioned this. Did the county in their two thirty-nine M comments say anything about the traffic?
Um, let me. Let me just pull that up here for a minute. No, they did not. The letter received from the county just stated that the Oneonta County Department of Public Works has received the above mentioned site plans. They appreciate this department was informed of the action. It appears that the proposed action is not within this department's jurisdiction under the provisions of section thirty-nine F of the New York State General Municipal Law and decline to comment. Our records indicate that Business Park Drive or Roads Drive are not within the jurisdiction of the county and the parcel does not have the forage on or direct access to a county road.
Chris, can I ask a question?
Questions regarding this review to James. Mark Koyak?
McCullough?
Nope. At our offices at seven nine three six two two zero.
Chris, can I ask a question about this? But that's weird because you sent it to the county planning department, right?
I did. I sent it via the normal two thirty-nine process and this was the response that I got back from Mark Blair.
That's very unusual. And did you know that Guy Sassaman retired?
I knew that he was planning on retiring. I did not know that he had retired.
I feel like this is a very bizarre. This is a bit of a bizarre response, I feel like, from the county. Like, it's almost like the person who got the two thirty-nine M stuff sent it off to the Department of Public Works and they attempted to do a review under the other section of the general municipal law, like, that's very weird.
Or it was just forwarded to the Department of Public Works.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm just as perplexed. I'm not too sure how they're handling things at the county at, at this time. But it, it does, it does seem very atypical of a response.
I think we're just going to have to, to deem that a, if that's the only response we've got, has it been thirty days?
Um, it has been.
Been thirty. Then it's twice.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see why that would matter if this is the response that we received from the county.
I would deem this like a, almost like a non-response, so I would say, you know, that, that two thirty-nine M review is satisfied, even if the county kind of screwed it up.
Okay, Kate, is it, is your opinion, Kate, that this should fall under a two thirty-nine review? Or that the county has no responsibility here?
Because of its proximity to the New Hartford town border and the New York Mills border, we have to send it to two thirty-nine M review for the county, which Chris did, which is very routine for Chris, so I know that he did it correctly. It seems that, I think that the person in the county, the, the county planning office who's doing this is maybe a new person doing it and I don't know what their procedure is now, but I'm going to deem two thirty-nine M review satisfied for this project.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Alright, does anybody have any other questions?
No, but Joe Cruz.
Hey, Joe, you cut out.
Are you talking to me?
No, no, Joe Cruz, I thought said something, then he, then he cut out.
I, I did, can you hear me now?
Yeah, now we can.
Okay, no, I just wanted you to know that I was on the call. I, I, I've been listening this whole time.
Okay.
Oh, beautiful.
And when you signed on, Joe, your name came up. And when you signed on, Joe, your name came up.
Good, thank you.
All right, is there any other questions?
Uh, no, not really. I, not for me, Joe, do you have any questions?
No, I'm fine with what I've heard and the questions asked by the other team members.
I'm all set from my end.
I would just say that after reviewing the EA, you know, the short EAF and the fact that this is, you know, I would recommend identifying this as a unlisted action under speaker and issuing a negative declaration.
Okay, so we need two motions is what you're saying, two, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Would someone like to take that on? The, the short EAF?
Well, I'll make a motion to declare this an unlisted action under the seeker.
Okay.
And I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next thing on the agenda is, do we, anybody want to make a motion for site plan approval?
Fred, do we need to declare a negative declaration as well?
You just did.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought you had just done that.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Good, Joe, I'm George. Would anybody like to make? I'll make a motion that we give site plan approval for this project. Any second?
Fred, can we just add to that? It's a contingency that the engineering review for all the updates is accepted by our engineering department.
Okay, that sounds good.
So can you give the final engineering comments?
Correct.
Yeah, right.
With that, I second it.
All right, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, passes. Very good. Is there anything else, Chris?
There is not.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
And I'll second.
All right, very good. This meeting has ended.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Everybody gave well.
Right.